Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order and to join, together with the joint meeting with the Carson City School District Board, which is tonight, starting at 6:00. Today is Thursday, June 20th, 2019. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 8:51 East William Street. We're also streaming on the Internet, and if you get the public access channel, we'll be on, that is on cable. Can we have a roll call? Aubrey, good morning.
Supervisor Giomi.
Good morning, I'm here.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Also here.
Supervisor Bagwa.
Here.
Supervisor Barrett.
President.
Mayor Crowe.
Here, thanks. We call our good friend Pat Probstner to get us started today.
Good morning, all. There was a famous author, George MacDonald, who has a poem that was entitled "Hidden Life," and he's talking about ordinary things. He talks about a man that was very intellectual, going into a super huge career, and his only dad needed him, so he came back and he started working farm and did ordinary things. So there was a bunch of his friends that thought it was a waste for his talents. Perhaps you two serve maybe in a place that's unnoticed, doing nothing more than ordinary things. Others might think that that would be a waste, but God wastes nothing. Every act that is rendered in his sake is noted, and eternal rewards will follow. Every place, no matter how small, no matter how holy the ground is, influence is more than lofty acts and lofty words. It can be a simple matter of human helpfulness, just being present, listening, understanding, being there for the needy, loving and praying. This is the way a day of worship turns out in service of the Lord. Scripture that goes along with that is whatever you do, whether in word or in deed, do all in the name of the Lord. Do it heartily to the Lord, not to men, knowing that the Lord, through him, you will receive a ward of inheritance. I just call it doing ordinary things in extraordinary ways. And as I look at the five of you and look at the room full of people that serve, I love this city, because people do ordinary things in extraordinary ways, and they do extraordinary things in what seems to be ordinary ways. It just comes simple to you.
So do you, so do you.
So I want to pray for y'all. Lord, thank you so much for what's happening in our city, Lord. Is I purposely drive down 395. It may be a little slower route, but, Lord, it's such a beautiful route now, and I thank you for just the work that we see going on. And, Lord, as I see all these black shirts here, it's, what's the buzz for today? So, Lord, we ask for your blessings to be upon these meetings, these proceedings, all of the agenda items, as we look, and the agenda is full. Lord, I ask you for energy and strength and wisdom and counsel over this room today. Lord, would you be honored and glorified, and as it says in Colossians 3:17 and 23, that whatever we do, whatever we do, Lord, we would do it all to the glory, all for you. Lord, not looking for man's approval. Though the kudos are nice every now and then, but, Lord, that's not where we get our strength from. We get it from you. So, Lord, bless this day, in Jesus' name. And if I could just say, happy birthday to my youngest granddaughter today, Cooper. Thank you, Mayor.
Good move, thank you. While we're all standing, can we have a moment of silence? Carson City lost one of its own last week, Andy Engelmann, who is a staunch defender of the old meeting law. So I'd like to just take a moment and reflect on, you know, what she would be telling us, you know, be careful what you do, because I'll be watching you, make sure that you're not violating your meeting law, which is absolutely fine. So let's just think about things for a minute. Thank you. Dan, would you, Mr. DA, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks, Pat. Okay. All right, we're going to now move on to public comment. This is, the public is invited this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this body. Mr. Sheriff.
How are we doing? I'll take a little bit of help from the board on this one. Summer is kicking off, and it's actually in high gear right now. This weekend, we have the Sheriff's Office Motor Competition over in the Marv Texera Pavilion. New place for us to do it, but that's not the only thing that's going on. We have Brew Fest downtown, we have the Brewery Arts Center kicking off concert series. There are just a host of events, not to mention even the epic rides coming up next week. There's a ton of opportunities for the public to go out and enjoy themselves, as Pat said just mentioned. Great things happen in this town, and those are the things that make this community so safe and so well.
Thank you, Kenny. I'm the sheriff. You know, when we have a community that has a good sense of pride, I think you'd agree with me that our crime rate goes down, because, you know, one, we're watching out for everybody else, and, you know, it, let me, I don't know how to express it, but I do know that the crime rate, when people feel better about who they are and where they live.
I couldn't agree with you more. When the community has good quality things to do, well-organized entertainment, good visitors into the city, things just happen well here. And so I appreciate all of the effort that everybody's been putting in for all of these events going on. We're in high gear all summer long, so it's very much appreciated.
Good, thank you, Sheriff, thank you. Anybody else on public comment? Anybody? Nobody? Okay, well, we take public comment at the end of the meeting, and we'll take it at the beginning of the school board meeting, and at the end, and we also take public comment where it's appropriate, and usually it always is appropriate during each of the agenda items. Okay, let's take up item six, possible approval of the minutes of May 16th and May 20th. Everybody had a chance to look at those? Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for May 16th, 2019, as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. I didn't see that one come up. There it is. Okay. Can we do the next one too, Brad?
On the next one, it wasn't here.
Okay, Laurie, thanks.
She'll get you. Are you ready?
You're ready, ready.
I move to approve the minutes of May 20, 2019, as presented.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Thank you, carried. Okay. Now let's take up the agenda. We're going to pull items 18E and F, that's the law enforcement radios issue. I don't know that there's anything else that has to be pulled. Any member of the board want anything else changed on the master agenda?
I'd like to pull 12B.
Well, yeah, okay. We'll take up, let's see, anybody have any other questions on consent? I better do it while we get here. Stacy, just hold that until consent here. All right, so unless there's an objection, we will adopt the agenda as published, with the exception of items 18E and F, which we'll hear later at some point in time. Okay, let's take up item number eight. Let's all move, let's, I wonder if I can say this right. Let's make a bee line down to the floor.
It's going to be a bee kind of day, all right. Yep.
A slow bee line.
A slow bee line, yeah, it's cute.
Who's going to do it? Come on, I'll learn, come on.
I should have worn this. Oh, no, we had pictures this morning.
Good morning, good morning. Everybody buzzing around.
The contract was supposed to go to...
What do you think, about right here? I better get the right proclamation here, just a minute, hold on.
You have an 18BT.
Oh, there it is. I got it, Stacy, hold on, I didn't see it there. So if anybody's wondering what the black bee shirts are doing, today we're issuing a proclamation celebrating National Pollinator Week, June 17th through June 23rd, 2019. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas pollination plays a vital role in the health of our national forests and grasslands, which provide forage, fish, and wildlife, timber, water, mineral resources, and recreational opportunities, as well as enhanced economic development opportunities for communities. And whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse ecosystems, and whereas the state of Nevada has managed wildlife habitats and public lands, such as Nevada forests and grasslands, for decades. And whereas the state of Nevada provides producers with conservation assistance, promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection and maintenance of pollinators and their habitats on working lands and wild lands. And whereas Carson City has been named the 76th Bee City USA by the Zerxie Society to acknowledge the work done by local pollinators, many are here today, by having created a special bee habitat on Carson Town Health property to attract pollinators. And I think probably everybody here has been up to see that. If you had, it's right behind the cancer center up there at the hospital. It's really phenomenal. I mean, can't say enough about it. I mean, I learned a lot that day. Whereas Carson City continues to support Nevada agencies and all those that work to protect, support, excuse me, that work to protect, support, maintain, and improve a healthy environment for pollinators. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowe, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of all of us here, including our Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim June 17th through the 23rd, 2019, as National Pollinator Week, and urge all citizens to recognize the important role of pollinators, of pollinator species, and conservation efforts to ensure their protection, dated the 17th day of June 2019. And let me just, I don't know who wants to, probably give this to Ronnie, the proclamation? Who's the president?
Actually, you can give it to these two guys right here.
Okay, let's do that.
That's the first.
All right, and we'll get a picture. But let me just say, you know, the Chamber of Leadership Class came up with a phenomenal idea to create a bee habitat. I know, you know, we've been looking at making Carson City a bee city for a while, and then they picked up the ball and created the bee habitat. And I think you all agree with me that, you know, our community, and at least I do, know a whole lot more about the importance of pollinators in our world, and the importance for the sustainability of human life, all life, as a matter of fact, that pollinators provide. And so on behalf of a grateful community, we want to thank the Chamber of Leadership Class of 2019 for coming up with an innovative idea that is not just innovative, but is healthy, environmentally proper, and is, explains and teaches us all what pollinators do in this world, and why, you know, why it's, it seems like sometimes, you know, pollinators, what do they do? They're bees flying around, or they're other pollinators. They perform a big function in this world. And so on behalf of all of us, our hats off to you folks. And I would encourage any of you, if you haven't gone up to the bee habitat or the bee hotel, take a trip up there. Not only will you be impressed with the bee hotel itself, but the signage that's done there is really quite interesting, and you'll learn a lot about bees and why they're important. So let's get a picture, okay? You guys want to say anything? I took, come on.
All right, well, first of all, I just want to thank Ronnie and the Chamber for giving us the opportunity to have the class or to be a part of the class, and then secondly, thank the city for sponsoring so many people in the city to be a part of the class. It's an amazing leadership program, and we learned so much about the city and so much about each other and the different leadership things that are going on in the city. And the Bee Project, we also want to thank you guys for just becoming a bee city, because that inspired us to do something that's going to help future generations, it's going to help everybody. And so just thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank everybody.
Okay, so let's get a little picture. Hold on, let me put this down. Rachel, what are we going to get? Let's get them. I'll get right here. You guys that will hold this, if you're doing like that. A big bee smile. A bee, all right? All right, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pictures today, otherwise I would be here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I got way up somewhere.
All right. Chris, where to go? Now we're going to take up another important, and I think a little, sometimes a little fun part of the morning on special presentations. We're going to recognize employees who've been with us a long time, and help make Carson City a better place to live, work, play, and just have a good time. How many of you watch CSI? How about our board members? You do, okay. Well, Jason Olson is a criminalist, he's been with us for five years, and we want to thank him, because he's Carson City CSI. So Jason, come on up. You can tell us all his secrets, too.
On behalf of a grateful community, thanks for all that you do. And, you know, sometimes you call that in the weeds, but it's very important to be in those weeds, so do a good job. Come on up here, all right?
All right, let's see.
Just go, Kerry.
Tell me again.
Kerry, just go, Kerry.
Kerry, Kerry, Kerry. Sheriff's Support Specialist Kerry, but Kerry. Kerry's been with us for 15 years. Kerry, what do you do down there? You see, I know what you do, but what's your job down there?
CCW.
Yeah, that's what I thought. How many, how many people got a CCW license? I'm not going to ask how many are Kerry-ing. I'm just going to ask, who's got the license? So Kerry, you've probably been a little busy lately.
Very.
Okay, on behalf of a grateful community, thank you for your 15 years of dedicated service to our Carson City, and making it a better place to live, and also have some, you know, teach people about firearms and things like that. Good move. So on behalf of all of us, thank you. Come on up.
Well, we'll get that change first. I got to get outside.
Perfect, thank you.
First time in this.
Really?
Yeah.
What a room.
Did it work?
It worked.
Good one again.
Good, yeah, they've all been positive.
Yes, and I've had four phone calls, just thanking us for explaining it. Didn't like that we don't have any money, but thanks for telling us.
Okay, let's now take up the consent agenda. Any member of the board, I think Stacy, you mentioned that you might have some things coming off. Which one do you want to pull?
12B.
12B. Okay, we'll pull 12B for the general agenda. Any other things to be moved from consent? Public, want anything moved from the consent agenda? Be heard especially under the regular agenda? I don't see any, okay. So with that in mind, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as published, with the exception of 12B, which we'll take up later.
I move to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item 12B, as presented.
There's a motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose nay, carried. Okay, that's the end of consent agenda. We'll now take up item 13, and under item 13, it's matters moved from the consent agenda, we'll take up item number 12B. Who's doing 12B? Chris, are you coming up? You're the hitter for Sean, the fire chief, today, right? You tell him you need a little overtime for coming up here and getting in the fire, man. Carol, tell us what's going on here.
Good morning, Carol Akers, purchasing contracts. This is for the discussion and possible action regarding the Carson City Fire Department's proposed use of Curtis Joiner Contract Number 0000170 with NPP Gov through, we are going to change that date, through June 19th, 2020, to purchase fire personnel protective equipment, turnouts, and fire rescue tools and equipment as needed for a not-to-exceed amount of $111,000 for fiscal year 20.
Okay, I think we're, Stacy, you want to just lead in, and if we need to have further explanation, the agenda item, we'll do that, too.
Sure, I just, June 19th was one of the items that I wanted to bring up and pull so we could get that correct, because there were a couple of different dates in the agreement. And the other question I had is, and it's just in the explanation, but Chris, it says that you're providing uniforms. Are you actually providing uniforms in the sense of uniforms like what you're wearing, or are we talking PPE and other items?
Chris Vaughn, deputy fire chief, for the record. You're right, sir, it's, the firefighters receive a stipend annually for actual uniforms. We're providing the personal protective equipment, the turnouts, and the wildland gear.
Okay, so it isn't uniforms. That was my query, obviously, which is, having the insider knowledge I had, it's not good for you, but just wanted to make sure that we weren't buying uniform uniforms.
No, thank you.
Okay, that was it?
And you used the term PPE, personal protective equipment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just so the record's clear. All right. Any other board members have any questions? Public, any questions on this item? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the purchase as presented with a change in the date for the termination of the contract to June 19th, 2020.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried. Okay, let's now take up some legislative issues. Item 14, let's go to 14A, see, Mary and Steve Walker are here this morning. Want to make a little presentation to us about their work during the 80th legislative session, that's obviously this year's legislative session. Good morning to you, and did you get some time off?
Not quite yet, for the record, Mary Walker. We're still getting reports out.
Okay.
And we finalized getting the reports out yesterday.
A little hard to decompress after one of those.
Yeah.
All right, who's going to start?
I'll go ahead and start. First, we do want to say thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Supervisor Bonkowski, the city manager, deputy city manager, and the finance director for being part of our Western Nevada Legislative Coalition. Our four regional counties, Carson, Douglas, Lyon, and Story Counties, all work together on one legislative direction, and it has really worked out very, very well. I want to thank you for being part of that. Also want to say thanks to Al Kramer, and he has just done a wonderful job, and he has an open-door policy. We can go in anytime and talk to him, and I really appreciate that very much. Our Senator, Senator Ben, also has an open-door policy, and really appreciate all of his help. It was a difficult session in regards to a lot of insurance-type issues, workers' compensation, the tort issues, prevailing wage issues, and those types of things. It was very difficult, but we didn't get everything fixed that we wanted to, but we got the majority of it, in particularly in regards to workers' compensation. At one point, Clark County added up the dollar amount of what the workers' compensation bills would cost to local governments and to school districts, and it was $75 million. And that was just those who submitted fiscal notes, because a lot of folks don't even submit fiscal notes. So it was, it was a whole, we started off with a wholesale change of workers' compensation that actually decoupled the health, caring of somebody who was injured on the job, was no longer on the job. It was just almost, just here's your healthcare. So we were able to pretty much turn that around, a lot of it because Clark County, Leslie Schell was our leader on that, she's the risk manager and general services director for Clark County, and she just did a wonderful job leading us. But it took, you know, we monitor about 500 bills for, about half of the bills deal with local governments on one issue or another. A lot of them are district attorney and sheriff's bills, but every single one of them come out, and we get them out to the departments, departments read them and respond back. It is a tremendous amount of work for about the first couple of months of the session. And I just want to thank city staff very, very much on those really highly technical issues, for example, workers' compensation. City staff did a great job helping us, testifying, and meeting with legislators, and that was very, very helpful. Just a couple of things. SB 48, as you know, our diesel tax bill was passed. It is effective January 1, 2020. It allows Board of County Commissioners to enact a 5-cent diesel tax, either by 2/3 majority of your board, or by going to the board deciding to go to a vote of the people. The important thing about this is for rural Nevada, and I think this is probably the major reason why it passed, is there is a taxpayer in equity in rural Nevada. Our local roads, construction and maintenance are only funded through the gas tax. So if you own a gas vehicle, you're paying for your local roads. If you own a diesel vehicle, you're not paying anything to local roads. So this is the first time that we're going to be able to get some taxpayer equity here in order to charge those vehicles that are using our roads. For Carson City, it's about $400,000 a year, if it was enacted. The SB 111, 25% any fund balance, that did change down to 16.67%. So instead of three months' worth of your fund, of expenditures set aside in your fund balance that cannot be used for negotiations, now it's going to be two months' worth, but it still meets the criteria of the Government Finance Officers Association, their national directives, and we did support that because it still was within the guidelines. We also wanted to support it because we didn't want it to go down any further, down to one month or to zero. We were very concerned about that. Some of the other bills, AB 81 Indigent Defense Bill did pass, but it passed with no funding. Some of the other ones, AB 240 Regional Planning, that was Assemblyman Daley's bill, and it does require the county managers of Carson, Douglas, Lyon, Story, and Washoe County to meet twice a year, beginning in 2020, and to talk about regional development type of issues. And I think we have those issues dealing with the growth in Washoe, just as Washoe may have a story. You know, I mean, it's a two-way street here. But I do feel pretty good, because our four county managers, we work so well together, I consider it four to one, because that's who's going to be compiling the final report. So I feel pretty good about how that ended up. AB 282, the Carson City Ward voting, that was amended out, and it only requires Henderson to go to the vote of the people. AB 301 requires the sheriff's report to the board if there's any deaths in the jail, and that's simply because in other counties, they've had those types of problems. AB 309, quarter-cent sales tax, the Board of County Commissioners can enact up to a quarter-cent sales tax for schools, homeless, affordable housing. AB 125, as you know, they had a tremendous amount of decriminalization... AB one-twenty-five, they, as you know, they had a tremendous amount of decriminalization of track, traffic tickets, and also they were looking at requiring that if, if someone was arrested, that within forty-eight hours that they have a preliminary hearing. Well, that would mean for rural Nevada that we would have courts on weekends and holidays. And that was fought all session long, and I, I really got involved in it. We thought we had it killed on the assembly side, then all of a sudden, when no one was there, it, it got out of committee with no notice, went over to, to the senate side, and we were able to stop it there. But that would have cost Carson City, just that one bill alone, about three hundred thousand dollars a year. And there were many, many bills that, that had fairly significant impacts to us, and I think for the most part, we were able to, to stop that. Instead, what they're going to do is have an interim committee to look at these issues. And I would recommend, one of the things that we look at is if, if we are going to be legally mandated to have courts on weekends or, or holidays, that perhaps we can look at regionalization, so that we're not, don't have, you know, four counties having court on weekends and holidays. Perhaps we have more in regards to video arraignment, and, and we kind of share resources in that regard. But that might be a, a good discussion. AB three-forty-five, that was same-day voter registration, that did pass. The nice thing about it, Carson City Clerk did a great job, was able to get us ninety thousand dollars in funding in order to pay for the costs of, of these, of these requirements.
And she stood her ground when they tried to make her, make her winkle it down.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Good on you, Aubrey. It's all right.
No, really, I really appreciate that. I thought they did a great job there. One thing you might want to do, because there were so many court and juvenile court changes that I, I would highly recommend that you work with your courts and your juvenile justice folks to talk about what the impacts will be. They did do so many changes, and the idea is we will decriminalize things, so you're going to get less revenues, although in, in the big justice reform bill, what we have in writing from LCB is that we can still do exactly what we're doing now in regards to court fees, but we do it administratively, and we don't do it with, with criminal fines, basically. We do it through fees and that type of stuff. So, so it's really going to be important for you to work with your courts in regards to that. But, and on the other end of it, theoretically, there should be less people in jail, so we should have savings there. It's, you know, it's a grand experiment, and I really hope it works out, and I think they are doing the right thing. I think our courts felt that, that some of these things were, were the right thing. Justice Hardey, the Supreme Court Chief Justice, was a big part of this, and so I'm, I'm hoping it's all going to work out, but I think you really need to work with, very, very closely with your, with your courts. AB five-thirty-three, the marijuana omnibus bill, we did have concerns about that. We wanted to make sure that we could retain local control, and we did, so, so we were happy with that. SB two-forty-five on tort-
Not only local control, but the, the final cannabis bill precludes local government from approving any pot lounges.
Right. Right.
So it's just off the table, period.
Right. Exactly. SB two-forty-five, tort actions. This is one of those bills where originally it was just way over the top. It, it would have charged a million and a half for gross negligence. It's the first time we would have ever had that. Currently, we have a hundred thousand dollar tort cap, and then it was going to go to two hundred fifty thousand. We were able to, to change that so that the final bill, the tort cap is a hundred thousand, in July one, twenty twenty, it'll be a hundred and fifty thousand, and then it goes to two hundred thousand effective July one, twenty twenty-two. So it's phased in over time. There are public records bill, open meeting law bills that do, they did make some change. I think, I think the one we had concerns with on the public records is that it eliminated our authority to charge additional fees for extraordinary requests. And so, you know, that was one that we wish we could have changed, but for the most part, a lot of that was, was changed. So in general, I think we ended up a heck of a lot better than when we started. And I do know that the governor and the, the leadership, legislative leadership did talk to folks and say, you know, you can't be so aggressive, you know, with these, for example, workers' compensation, we need to negotiate, and they did. And so in the end, I think it's, they fixed some problems that needed to be fixed, like, for example, making sure workers' compensation for firefighter women who have cancer, for example, and making sure that those types of cancers are, are in, you know, there, there are, you know, there are responsibility. So there were some good things that happened there, and, and in the end, I think it was reasonable, and we did get a little bit of help, so. The interim, we're going to have a lot of, there's a lot of studies in the interim. As I mentioned, the justice court, the, the pre-trial release of defendants is going to be very important. There's also ACR four, the Study of Wildfires, SCR three, Study of Alternative Solutions for Transportation Funding, that could be an avenue for us. The, always the Legislative Committee for Review and Oversight of TRP and Marlette, Legislative Committee on Child Welfare and Juvenile Justice, that's going to be important because they're going to look at funding for child welfare. Now, we don't pay for child welfare, the state does. And what I want to make sure of is that they're not going to pass it down to us. So I'm, you know, that's going to be an important one. There's a Committee on Energy, Healthcare, and Public Land, so it's going to be busy, there's going to be a lot of things to do, and so with, with that. And then Steve can talk about water bills.
Want to do that, then if we've got any questions, we'll talk to both of you. Go ahead, Steve.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Board of Supervisors. For the record, Steve Walker. I also want to thank staff for the help, particularly Darren, on the water bills. He's an excellent resource. And first of all, it was, there was thirteen water bills this session. There's normally four or five, and so it was extensive. From Carson City's standpoint, though, it, you don't have a lot of issues, because you basically have only two hydrographic basins, the lake and Carson Basin right here, and they're both pretty well-watered. And you also have a, your water rights are all in order. So basically, you didn't take positions on many of the water bills at all, and, and it speaks to the robust system that you have, and, and how your water is managed, and you should be proud of it. With that, though, there will be some bills that did have some impact. One of them would be AB one-sixty-three. It is when you do the conservation plan submitted to the state engineer's office on a five-year basis. This will make that, you do a leak analysis. I'm sure that, that you would probably do that anyway, but that would be required. And the other issue is that there is a component of that bill that says any remodel or new construction after two thousand and twenty would require the use of water, EPA-approved water sense fixtures. And water sense fixtures are probably, well, an example would be the code right now for a toilet is one point six gallons per minute. A water sense fixture would be less than that, one point three. The issue, though, is that there isn't, it hasn't been approved by the EPA, and so until it is approved, they won't be required. And I don't know really the status of it, but that's, could impact basically construction. The other bill, it could be the SB one-fifty, it is a bill that requires a, that you do water planning, which you, you have, but this would be required to be submitted, and it's, it's specific to, I have this, these many parcels, I have this money, water rights, do they match? And, and so it's putting demand to your master plant, water demand to your master plant, which is a good idea.
What, how does that change from what we do now?
I would say that the only thing that would change is that there'd be a submission requirement that you probably, you know, you have your water resource plan on your shelf, and, and now it would be submitted to the state engineer, and it'd be with more detail. But I, but not, I don't think it's really significant. I think it's really looking at other more rural counties that, that really haven't done the matching the resource with their master plan or their private land, but I don't think it's a big impact. The, probably the biggest bill, or the thing, a good bill that happened, SB at the very end, SB five-oh-seven, and that gave two hundred thousand dollars for the, to cover the operating deficit of the Marlette Lake Water System. And, and I think that obviously during the interim, and particularly for the Committee on Public, Committee on Marlette Lake Water, that there will be a discussion, that that's the issue going on right now. And it's, I think it's really important that Carson City make sure that they do stay in the game on the Marlette system, and one of the reasons is, I went to a presentation yesterday on global warming, and, and it looked, it was very, very extensive analysis, taking all the models of warming on the Truckee River, which is basically, Marlette Lake is part of that system, and taking eight models and projecting out what'll happen.
How was Marlette Lake part of the Truckee River system?
Marlette Lake spills into Lake Tahoe, and part of, part of it goes down Frack Down Creek, so that's, that's, so it is. And so the models indicate that there's going to be, almost all of them say, a little bit more precipitation, but it's going to occur as rain and not snow, early snow melt, and that's what we assume. And the reason that the Marlette Lake system is you, is important is you have catchment at Marlette Lake, and you have catchment at Hobart Reservoir. In areas where it might not be, be more rain than snow, you want to have those catchments, and it'll, it'll enhance your water system. So as we move forward during the interim, I'll be involved with that, those issues on Marlette Lake, and we'll see, I'm sure it can work out. There's water there. The actual Frack Down decree, it gives ten CFS of water right to the system above Red House for Virginia City and Carson City, as mentioned. That is a, ten CFS converts to about seventy-three hundred acre feet of water versus demand now that you're using probably two, and so there is the resource there. I also covered Public Works Bill, and there is changes. Basically, for four years, you've had two hundred fifty thousand dollars as the key to when you have to do prevailing wage. It's down, back to where it was previously now, it's a hundred thousand dollars. And there's also the apprentice bill, SB two-oh-seven, which also it keys into anything above a hundred thousand dollars, and that would require that on vertical construction that ten percent of the hours paid are paid to apprentices, on horizontal construction, three percent. Those will go up in two thousand and twenty. You can appeal the apprentice issue to the Labor Commissioner if you have issues with getting apprentices and, and get a waiver. And it's also, the bill does require the contractor and subcontractor to do the actual monitoring and administration of the apprentices, which originally it didn't, it would have a big impact. So, and, and lastly, AB eighty-four, AB eighty-four is a bill that reintroduced the bonds that were approved in two thousand by the voters for historic preservation, wildlife, environmental restoration, rivers, those type of things, those type of projects. It is for two hundred and seventeen million dollars instead of two hundred million dollars. It took the seventeen million dollars from what was left over from the original bonding. It has a lot of carve-outs for the South, and because they initiated it. But we did negotiate two issues, a ten million dollar carve-outs for the Truckee and the Carson Rivers for restoration, and work on those, and also five million dollars for the Tahoe Bike Path, which I hope would then extend into the Carson portion of the lake. So, but, and again, there'd be, in grant programs, there's fifty-seven million dollars for grants that you can apply for, the projects that are recognized under the bonding. Realize that it's two hundred and seventeen million dollars, but it's bonding, it's, there's not two hundred and seventeen million dollars there. It's just as bonds are paid off by the state, money becomes available, and, and that's how it'll work.
What was the position that Carson City, or what position did you espouse on behalf of Carson City on that bill?
The position we had was that Jennifer, from the Parks Department, and a group of Douglas County, Washoe County, all went and talked to the bill sponsors and tried to get as much as we could. The issue that we, they, that they carried forward was, in the original two, two thousand language, the grant program was specific to geographic designations, Washoe County, Clark County, rurals. And that was the position that they, the group that I was representing through the coalition wanted, and we didn't get there. It was actually opposed mostly by NGOs, so nature conservancies, other entities like that. And the position we took was that in the end, at the testimony, neutral. And with that, that's it.
Questions of Steve or Mary? Go, shoot.
So on, can you give me a little more information on SB three-forty-two, the Animal Control Bill? Because we have a contractor, and I'm interested to determine if we need to do any updates in that contract. So what, what specifically do we have to do better or different?
Sure. For the record, Mary Walker, what that bill did is it really addressed when a owner is arrested and put in jail, what do you do with the animal? And so it developed a process and notification about what you deal with that animal. So that was one part of it. Another part of it was in regards to animal cruelty, and when you take animals away from an owner because of animal cruelty, it gives them an avenue to go to court. So those are some of the, the bigger things that were, that were addressed in that bill.
I, I think what I'm looking for, when it says suitable home, does it include, though, that you can take the animal to the shelter? Is that considered a suitable placement for the animal? I guess that's what I'm worried about.
There's a timeframe. They, it, it sets out a timeframe. Like, for example, I think it's ten days that we have to try and notify people and to hold the animal. The problem was, and this came out of Washoe County, the problem was is they were holding animals for months and months, and, and so there was taking up space because they couldn't find suitable homes, there was no avenue to find another home. Yeah. And so that, that was the, the original problem that they were trying to resolve.
Maybe just staff can just double-check when we work on our contract and stuff, that we stay in compliance. Thanks.
Any other questions of the board, for Mary or Steve? John, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to compliment you on what I consider one of the chief functions of lobbyists at legislatures, and I have five legislators in my background in various forms, three of them covering it as a news reporter. Defense is probably eighty percent of your job, much of the time, and I, looking from afar, felt it was maybe ninety percent of your job this year. Secondarily, I wonder if you could give any, do you know any estimates on the prevailing wage change that will cost local governments, Carson City and statewide, or is there?
For, the fiscal note from Carson City was two hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Go ahead. Was there a cap put on negligence for tort, gross negligence for tort actions?
No, that was, that was completely taken out.
What's the limit now? What's the limit now, Mary?
All we have now is what's currently a hundred thousand, it'll go to a hundred fifty, a hundred fifty thousand, and then two hundred thousand, and that's for everything.
So if you, and that's for negligence? What if you do gross negligence?
It doesn't matter. It's not defined. It's only two hundred thousand is the maximum it'll go to, just like today, just like today.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Anybody else? Thank you very much. Take some time.
Thank you.
All right. You're living a beautiful part of the country down there in Genoa. Go enjoy it. All right. Let's take up item, uh, 14B. Wes? How's the organization that I'm president of doing these days?
Excuse me?
Since I don't know, how's the organization that I'm president of doing?
It's, it's doing well.
There, there you go.
Ah, there we go. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of Board of Supervisors. It's a pleasure being here and it's a pleasure following the Walkers because they did most of my job for me. So, that, that worked out really well. Um, I will echo their comments that it was a strange session. You know, all sessions are unique. This one was just flat weird. But we, we got through it. Uh, as of this morning, when I look, the governor has signed 633 bills into law, which is, you know, I'm not sure Nevada needs 633 new laws every two years, but that's about the average.
Well, it takes a lot of repeal of law.
It does. It does.
Sorry.
So, you know, as I told you before, the league submitted four BDRs this session. We pulled one of them back following the election. We had a placeholder in there in case question three had passed to make sure that the local governments maintain control over regulating the electrical companies. Since that bill, uh, that measure failed, we pulled the BDR. Uh, the other BDRs we had, we had one bill that had to do with marijuana licensing. That bill got lost in the whole cannabis control board issue. Um, our bill to allow cities to construct, install and maintain ADA compliant ramps within a public right of way or a utility easement was passed. So as of, and it was effective on approval. So as of now, when you go in to rehabilitate a sidewalk, you don't have to track down the owners of the utility easements. You can just go ahead and install the ADA compliant ramp. The bill also contained language that if a city is going to annex property, they have to provide the public utilities with notice within 10 days. But that doesn't affect you because you have no word to annex. So, um, that bill that we had had to do with the compensation that members of a Board of Directors or a General Improvement District can get paid. Uh, we were seeking to increase the statutory limits that had been in place for a long time. Uh, sailed through the Senate, got to the House, and apparently it got to the House after the 60-day cutoff, so they weren't getting paid anymore. So they weren't, weren't real favorable of that. But we did get it amended so that it's, it's providing clarification now that the purse contributions don't count towards the salary cap. Um, some of the, some of the other bills that I want to mention, and I'll, I'll try not to be too repetitive of the Walkers. Um, last week, there was municipal elections in several cities. That was the last even number, odd numbered year of elections. AB 50 passed, so effective 2020, all municipal elections will be on the state cycle. Uh, some of bill 104, this bill was submitted by Assemblywoman Swank. This bill, uh, contains an appropriation to continue to Nevada Main Street program, which is a really good program. And if you don't have one here, I would consider looking at it. Uh, the Walkers mentioned the prevailing wage rollback. And to Supervisor Barrett, to answer your question, our members are telling us that when you pay prevailing wage on a project, your costs increase by about 30%. So, the projects that you could done the last four years that were between 100,000 and $250,000 would cost you 30% more if you were to do them today, which obviously means not everything will get done. Um, 8476, this bill codified, um, regulatory language regarding the Advisory Committee on Private Activity Bonds. Uh, we were able to get an amendment in the bill to maintain the seats on that, on that board for both League of Cities and for NACO. Uh, 533, the marijuana bill. There is a, in a cannabis advisory commission that also has subcommittees, and one of them has to do with local government issues, and we were able to get a nomination on that, on that subcommittee for both the league and, and NACO as well. Uh, Mary talked about, um, the occupational diseases. Prevailing wage, you know, we, and everybody knew, I think, the day after the general election last year, that the 2015 reforms were going to be rolled back, and they were. However, we did get one victory on prevailing wage, that was Senate Bill 243. And that changes the way that the prevailing wage is going to be set. Under current law, it is set by county. And it basically ends up being the union wage in the county. Effective, I believe, July 1st, they're going to change that to where the state's going to be broken up into four regions. There will be a Clark County region, which unfortunately still includes the city of Mesquite. We were trying to get them out. And a Washoe County region. And then there will be a northern Nevada rural region and a southern Nevada rural region. So instead of having 17 different prevailing wages, there will be four. And we're hoping that this will allow, you know, more of the contractors to report what, what they're paying for each particular trade. So hopefully this, this will kind of lower some of the prevailing wages set, especially in the rural areas. You know, like I said, we were trying to get Mesquite out of, out of Clark County because it's a totally different labor market, but they weren't going for that. Talked about Senate Bill 245. Uh, Senate Bill 287 was the, uh, public records bill. When it was first introduced, it was draconian. Um, we thought the bill was dead a couple of times, but legislative session, nothing's dead until signee die. It came back, but we were able to, um, get the language in, so it's, so it's not as bad as it was. Uh, one, um, significant addition to the language was for you to have, there, there's now penalties for violations of public records request, but it has to be a willful violation. Okay? Which is, is more difficult to prove. And, and the penalties got rolled back considerably. The original bill had it up to $250,000. Now, I believe it's $1,000 for a first occurrence, uh, $5,000 for a second, $10,000 for a third or a future, but we also got a shot clock put on it. So if, if the third viol, if there's, you only have one violation, you don't have another one for over 10 years. And then you do have a violation, it's still considered a, a first violation. But that, that bill took a, a lot of work, a, a lot of work. Um, that's about it on the legislative session for league activities, just to bring you guys up to date. And first of all, I want to thank you again for your membership in the league. You know, we get our strength from, from you guys. And thank you individually for your, for your public service. Uh, our conference this year will be in the city of Henderson. It's September 25th and 26th. Somehow NACO and us ended up on the same dates this year, so we hope some of you can, can come see us. I know some of you want to go to, to the NACO conference. Uh, the National League of Cities Conference this year is in San Antonio, and that's in November 20th to 24th. And I encourage you to attend that if you can. And I am obviously starting my, my trip around the state to bring everybody up to date on what, what happened in the legislative session and other things that are going on. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Wes? You know, I'm, I'm signed up for both the, the NACO National Convention in Las Vegas and the National League of Cities Convention in San Antonio. I mention that because board members, if, it's not only people who are there, anybody can go to those things. So if you're interested in taking on, you know, going to one of those national ones, I've never been to some of them, I think. So, you know, let, um, city manager, deputy city manager know what you want to do because it's, you're, you're eligible to go. Okay?
And I, I think they're, they're, they're really valuable conferences. You know, the National League of Cities, they, the lineup of speakers they have and educational sessions they have are just phenomenal. And just like our conference, you know, I, I think that the, the general sessions that we have and the edu- educational sessions are the meat and potatoes of the conference, but also the, the, the social events that you have where you get to interact with your peers in a, in a less formal setting. You know, cause I, I kind of believe that there are no new problems, there's just a problem you may, you, you haven't had yet, but there's probably somebody in that room that's had it. You know, just the relationships that you, that you build and, and the, the peer-to-peer learning is, is, makes attending those conferences worthwhile.
Okay. Anybody else? Other comment on, on any of the legislative matters? I don't see any. Thanks, Wes.
Thank you.
All right. You get some rest, too.
I will. I've had my granddaughters like since the day after the session, so it's been fun.
That's not much rest. All right. All right, let's take up, uh, uh, item 14C. This is, uh, discussion of possible action to appoint one member to the Airport Authority in the manufacturer position to fill an unexpired terminal in October 2020. I understand we have one position and one applicant, right? Do I get that right? Clyde?
Correct.
Come on up, Clyde. How are you this morning?
I'm doing wonderful. How are you guys?
Good. For the record, this is Clyde Simmons coming to the table. He's the applicant for the manufacturer position on the Airport Authority. Why don't you just tell us why you want to do this? Tell us a little bit about yourself first. I'm kidding you, but.
Uh, well, let's see. Uh, my name is Clyde Simmons, been living here in Carson City for pushing 20 years. Um, and, um, I live in the same community that the airport resides, uh, zip code, same zip code area, and, um, work in a manufacturing company that borders on the airport, uh, property and, uh, private pilot. So I have a lot of special interest in, in the airport. I come seeking this position not with any agenda of, uh, what I want to get accomplished. I just, it's more of a, uh, educational pursuit and curiosity as to how I can possibly use my skillset to contribute to, to help the, um, the airport. So that's, uh, that's why I'm here.
What do you fly?
Pardon me?
What do you fly?
Uh, well, I previously flew a Cessna 182 prior to a Piper 180, um, Cherokee. Um, but, uh, I sold my plane about five years ago, so currently I'm not flying.
Happens to when we get older, we want to.
Yeah. Yeah, there was.
Okay. Questions of Clyde? Anybody? Okay. Well, entertain them.
No, just want to say, he looks like, welcome. I just want to say, welcome. I'm on the Airport Authority and, and you're placing a good man, and I'm sure you're a good man, too.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Who wants to make a motion? Suva Zbinkowski.
I move to appoint Clyde Simmons to the Airport Authority manufacturer position to fill an unexpired term set to end in October 2020.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Carrie, thanks, Clyde. Thanks for stepping up to help out our community.
Thank you guys for your contributions to the community as well. Thank you.
All right, let's take up item 14D. Andrew Haskins.
Good morning.
Stella Snacks.
Yes. Um, for the record, Andrew Haskin, Director of Business Development for Northern Nevada Development Authority. I'm here to discuss Stellar Snacks this morning and, um, seek a letter of acknowledgement from you, uh, for their state tax incentives. They're applying today for the, um, sales and use tax abatement, the modified business tax.
Andrew, before you get going on that.
Yes.
Suva Zbinkowski, I thought it was another item, John, I'm sorry. Suva Zbinkowski wants a disclosure. I'm sorry, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this item, NRS 281A420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. My spouse works for the Governor's Office of Economic Development, but in the CDPG program and not in luring companies. The matter before me today is not affected by my relationship and therefore is not a disqualifying conflict of interest, but I want that on record. I will participate and vote on this matter.
Thanks, John. I apologize.
No problem.
I knew about it and, okay, sorry. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, no, no problem. Um, anyway, the company is seeking the sales and use tax abatement, the modified business tax abatement, and the personal property tax abatement. Stellar Snacks is a woman-owned company. Um, they're a startup. They're going to be manufacturing pretzels, roasted nuts, branded and, branded and non-branded products. They, uh, plan to serve clients from around the world, um, from large grocery chains to airlines, um, all from their Carson City facility. So it's pretty exciting. Um, I'm sure you're aware, the building that they went into was, was vacant for quite some time, so, um, glad to see that it got filled and got filled with a similar use. They plan to hire 93 employees in the first two years with an average wage of 2268 per hour. Uh, the company also plans to invest 11.3 million dollars in, uh, new capital equipment. Um, so it's a pretty, pretty substantial investment in the community. Um, they also plan to expand further in the future. Um, in the coming years, coming years, they're planning to purchase more equipment and, um, they want to take that staff total up over 140, uh, at some point. So, um, anyway, uh, I'll keep it short because I know you have a pretty big agenda today, but, uh, NDA fully supports this application and respectfully requests your letter of acknowledgement.
I think Stellar Snacks provides all the snacks for United Airlines.
Correct. Yeah.
It's nice to have Carson City name on United Airlines snacks.
Yeah.
How many people read that? But, yeah. Just shove it in their mouth, but you know, it's not bad.
Yeah.
Suva Zbinkowski.
Right, that is kind of my question. I think I heard you say that this is a startup country, company.
Correct.
It is a startup? I thought they're already in business and they're already doing.
They're in Reno.
Well, so, uh, she has another company, um, that, that is in Reno, but this is a, this is separate, so it would be considered a startup. But yeah, um, she, she has already a successful business in Reno as well.
Doing the same thing.
Something very similar. Yes.
So where's the money coming from for this business?
Um, that, I'm not sure.
And what are the clawback provisions if they don't meet their goals?
Um, if they don't meet their goals, um, the state has 100% clawback clause in the contract.
Other questions of Andrew? It's a good question. Anybody? Okay. Public comment? All right, uh, let's take a motion then.
I move to acknowledge the application from Stellar Snacks for state incentives through the Governor's Office of Economic Development.
There's a motion, is there a second? Boy.
I'll say.
I get, I, sometimes my, okay, I'm kidding. Um, all right, on the motion discussion, we can discuss now. Anybody? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Carrie, thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's take up, uh, we'll take a break here in a little bit, but, um, let's take up public, item 15, Public Works. Uh, this is, uh, discussion of possible action on second reading, Bill 104. This is the waste management ordinance matter. Doesn't really affect the contract, but it's putting it in the ordinance like the old one was. All right. Mr. Reese, how are you this morning?
Todd Reese, for the record. I'm doing good, Mr. Mayor.
How's your water law doing?
It's moving forward.
Okay. Any changes, uh, any comments since the first reading?
Um, no changes, uh, no comments that I've received since, since the first reading.
Mr. Cooley, anything?
Nope. Just working through all the issues.
Okay. Brad.
Ordinance number?
2019 dash six.
Do you want to call for public comment?
You have public comment on this? Thanks. Public comment? Anybody? All right. Don't hear any. Motion's in order.
I move to adopt Bill Number 104 on second reading, ordinance number 2019 dash six.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion, all in favor? Discussion, sorry. Go.
Yeah, um, of course, when this item came up before, the vote was three to two. I voted for it because it doesn't change the actual franchise agreement, it just cleans up ordinance. So although I'm not happy with the language in this, I do agree that we do need to clean up the ordinance, and so I will be voting for it just for that reason.
Any other discussion? All right, on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay?
Nay.
Okay, so we got three ayes and two nays. All right. Okay? All right. All right, um, let's, um, let's take 16 if we can get through that before we take Let's, let's take 16 if we can get through that before we take a break. Let's take up item 16 Alpha. This is a discussion of possible action regarding interlocal contract with Douglas County in an amount not to exceed $260,000 for the period July 1, 2019, to June 30 of 2020, and $270,000 for the period July 1, 2020, through June 30 of 2021, and $280,000 for the period July 1, 2021, to 2022. Talk to us about cross-jurisdictional sharing and why you want to continue doing this.
Thank you. For the record, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. So this will be our second renewal. The third contract, the partnership is going well, and, you know, I think Douglas, well, I know Douglas County is happy with the service that we are providing.
I don't see them in the room.
It's going to go to their Board of Commissioners this afternoon, and they actually have it on consent.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
A pointed discussion on this, we have a conversation going on in the background now with staff because it was brought to our attention that one of the questions that we generally ask on grant-funded positions or positions that are hired just for memorandums of understanding or mutual use agreements is that the positions go away when the money goes away. And there now seems to be a question on whether or not that, whether we can actually do that. And of course, we have been told repeatedly that that is the case, that these positions would go away when the money goes away. In this particular case, on this contract, these are existing positions. They're already, they're already there, they're already being paid, and so there's nothing that we can do about it on this. But I just want to go on record saying that I'm not going to be willing to approve any contract that hires temporary employees as city employees until we resolve this issue of whether or not those positions go away when the money goes away. So I just wanted to be, you know, on the record about that, that that's, it's an issue that just came up. We haven't had time to resolve it, but it is a very serious issue that we're going to have to resolve because we may have dozens of employees out there now who we thought we were going to be able to terminate when the money went away. And if that's not the case, that's a problem for us, or at least it's a problem for me.
And you're correct that that is a problem, and we are having discussions about that, especially since, you know, I have a very large number of employees that are grant-funded. So this has been a discussion that we've had going, and you are absolutely correct.
Got you.
So just for a point of clarification, I'm in complete agreement with Supervisor Bonkowski, but it's really not the position. The position will be eliminated. It's the body in the position. So I just want to clarify slightly, the bumping rights is what we're talking about. So I wouldn't even approve this contract if it wasn't, the positions will be eliminated because obviously I don't need two positions in Douglas County. So we will eliminate the positions if this interlocal is not renewed at some point. So I do want to put that on the record. The positions will not be funded by Carson City without the money from Douglas County. It's really a bumping rights issue for discussion, so.
And you're correct, and I just want to bring attention to the board that we did have another contract that was dissolved with Douglas County, and those employees were absorbed by Douglas County. The service that we're providing is mandated, so if they decide or we decide not to go forth with environmental services in Douglas County, they're still going to have to provide that service. And getting environmental health specialists is very difficult. So, but I just want to remind, we did have that situation, and those employees were absorbed by Douglas County.
Stacy first, Miss Man, Stacy then.
This is the same topic.
Topic, go.
No, mine's not the same topic.
So based on what you just said, Nikki, what's the advantage for Carson City for us to provide this service? Is it the same question? Okay, see.
The advantage to us is having the depth in the workforce. So we have two inspectors in Carson City, two in Douglas County. So, I mean, we had a vacancy in the one in Douglas County, but we still had individuals that could help do those inspections and vice versa. We're looking at a vacancy in Carson City here soon, and we've got two other inspectors that can help take that workload. And we have put in the contract and in the budget some oversight, so they're paying for oversight of the program, and they're also paying for some fiscal. So they're paying their share.
We have other functions that are performed in Carson City that are performed by Douglas, I thought, like GIS, some of that, unless that's gone, or the stoplights.
It's gone. We do it all.
We're doing it for them, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so none of it's coming back? You might not know that, Nikki. Sorry. All right.
You know, and as we, as I was listening to the walkers present, you know, there's, this is that regionalization, and, you know, it can be an advantage when we regionalize some services.
Stacy.
From my perspective, I'm a big proponent of regionalization. Did a lot when I was with the Fire Department, and I applaud you for doing that. I just want to make sure when we're doing it, we're asking ourselves the question, is it benefiting our citizens in Carson City for us to do this? Because if it's not, then we have to take a much harder look at why we're doing it. So that's just my two cents worth.
For the record, Dustin Booth, Carson City Health and Human Services, the manager over the environmental health staff. So in regards to the benefit to the citizens, you know, we share about, there's that retail area, Topsie Lane, that has a Carson City address, so a lot of people think it's Carson City. So when the state controlled it, I always had to, need to call the state. You couldn't, I couldn't answer that because they weren't our establishments. Now, a citizen can call one location with, you know, the, so that the staffers, it's easier for them to get the answers they have or the questions in regards to establishments up at Topsie Lane because most, a lot of people think that that is Carson City, even though it's Douglas County.
Okay. Other comments or questions of these folks?
Just a general comment about the benefits. So for instance, Dustin, both Douglas County and Carson City didn't have to hire the boss, right? We get to have one boss and they can help share in the expenses. So for that side, we would have had 100% cost no matter what for Dustin, so we are able to do a recovery. So in this case, I can see a benefit. And then I think having more food inspectors and things like that can also be a benefit of cross-training and just more opportunities to see issues. So I think it helps educationally for staff also. So I see this one as a benefit. Thank you.
And I agree with you. I think, I think the addition of the administrative fee is the wrong word, but, but sharing of expenses, I think that's a very valid reason for local governments to share resources because it benefits the taxpayers by saving money and the knowledge that you're building across county lines and backing each other up. So I, I think you've hit the mark here, and I wasn't trying to imply that you weren't. So, thank you.
I think sometime, you know, it might be beneficial to go back when we first started this program and look at the rationale and the justification. But I don't know that we're plowing new ground here, but I think it'd be beneficial for all of us up here to know, you know, what was the theory and the justification for doing cross-jurisdictional sharing in the first place, what it meant for financial savings for both, both counties, and why we entered into the contract, what, seven years ago, five years ago now? Something like that? Okay. All right. Anything else? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in on it? Okay. Who wants to make a motion?
I got it. I move to approve the inter-local contract with Douglas County as proposed.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Want to take a break or keep going?
I'm good.
Are we good? Okay, let's take up item 17 Alpha. Let's take up, you guys ready for 17? Ann, let's do it.
Yeah.
How you doing?
Good.
Good. All right, who's going to start, Ann? All right, good morning.
For the record, Ann Bollinger, Open Space Administrator. With me this morning is Bruce Scott, Chairman of the Open Space Advisory Committee, and Alan Welch is our Vice Chair of the Open Space Advisory Committee. And today we would like to present our annual report from 2018 as well as our work plan.
Are you looking at me to present? I thought I was just eye candy here.
You're doing a pretty good job.
Yeah, that's a, that's a stretch, Mr. Mayor. Alan and I are happy to be here. We're very proud of the open space program. We've got a lot going for us, a small staff, a lot of volunteer support, a lot of community support, and we have done a lot of things, as you'll see, in your, in your packet. We would be happy to highlight anything you have particular questions on. I don't know that getting into a lot of detail is necessarily critical, but please don't, I don't mean to shut things off. I'm happy to discuss anything, and if you have hard questions, why, Alan will take care of them. But we're proud to be a part of your advisory committee on open space. And just to summarize very briefly, we have a small staff that's very good. We're looking forward to having a full-time trails coordinator starting July 1, which is going to be a big plus. We're integrated in a lot of different ways with a lot of community support, and we're really proud of what we're doing with a pretty limited staff. You know, we could, you can always use more people, but I don't think it's unhealthy to be a little bit hungry and a little bit have a few more things out there to keep, keep going with, and opportunities for, frankly, for everything from Eagle Scout projects to trash mobs to the tremendous support we get from organizations like Muscle Power and a lot of the residents, businesses, and other members of the community. So maybe, Mr. Mayor and members of the board, we could, if you have specific questions, we can talk about anything you have a question on. And Ann, I don't know if I've missed anything you think is critical, but that would be an overall summary, at least for a starting of the discussion.
Brad, Brad and Lori.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend all of you on, on the thoroughness and completeness of the report and the work plan. You know, generally I would have a lot of questions, but after reading all of this, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear and it's very thorough. So I don't actually have any questions. Congratulations, I think, that you did a good job of presenting, and like the workload that, that you have and the number of accomplishments for the last year is pretty incredible in, in my mind.
Sure is. Lori.
So, good morning. I think I saw you recently. I'd like to talk a little bit about your thoughts on the AmeriCorps volunteers. Is that something new that we ventured into, and do you think it's successful? We should really continue in that endeavor? They brought value. I kind of just like a little bit of your thoughts on the AmeriCorps volunteer program.
Sure. We've had a tremendous amount of support from the AmeriCorps volunteers and some outstanding people. Some of them have, most of them go on to other things, but we have really benefited from that program. Without that kind of support, we would be forced, I think, to look, if we want to maintain anything close to what we have going now, we'd, we'd be forced to look hard at part-time or other levels of support that would come at a greater expense to our budget. So I'll let Ann, kind of, who's much closer to it, but from, from my perspective, they've been outstanding. We have gotten tremendously more for our money than what it's cost us, and we have gotten some really good programs going that would never, never have happened. So I'm very pleased with it.
I don't know who's next, John or Stacy? Supervisor Barrett, I'm looking over there that way.
I'm, I'm really just interested in, in the value because they cost, it's obviously greatly reduced, but is it the right value and should we continue the program? That's really what I'm interested in, is that, is that a priority we should maintain? I know my answer because I sit on Parks and Rec, open space meetings, but I think it's important for the public to understand that resource.
It is absolutely one of the best values for the city. I think in, in the budget, it's about 15,000 to 20,000 for the fiscal year, which is matched with federal funds through the AmeriCorps program. And the students when they come, or I should say graduates usually, when they come to us, they're working 40 hours a week. So the interpretive programs that you've seen around town are due to the AmeriCorps program, to, to the volunteer, they're considered volunteers, they are, they do receive a small stipend, it's not very much, and then they receive an education award at the end of their contract as well. But without a doubt, it's one of the best values for the city.
You okay? No? John? No, go. Go.
Okay, thanks. I want to commend you on a great report. Only one criticism, and I'll speak on behalf of the mayor and myself, who are both Rotarians. I noticed you got Kiwanis in your list of associations or groups that have helped. I want to add Rotary, I've been up on the secret trail, working with muscle-powered and Rotary, helping that trail. So just a little advertising for Rotary. Thanks.
We don't want to snub any potential volunteer group.
I knew you didn't.
We apologize for that.
Stacy.
I, I just want to add my thanks, that the, the staff and the volunteers are an impressive group, and you've accomplished an impressive body of work and put together a top-notch report. So congratulations and thanks for that. And I just want to throw my support by the AmeriCorps program, too. I think it's wonderful for a lot of reasons, not only for the reasons that the city gets really inexpensive labor, but we're developing people who have an appreciation for our outside, for our environment. And the Water Subconservancy District also had an AmeriCorps individual recently, and it's great job skill development for them. They often go on to great jobs in government, and it's a great way to integrate them into the communities that hopefully they'll live in and continue to thrive in. So I really like the trail connection components here. I'm super excited that we're getting a trails coordinator. I think we underestimate the economic value of our trails in this community and how they impact tourism here and get our people out and about and healthy. So I just want to emphasize the two projects that I see on here, and I know you're working on them, the Kings Canyon Road and maintaining that because I know from a, from fire safety perspective, it's super important to maintain access up there, and the Mexican Dam Safe Passage component. So I'm excited to see both those on there and, and go forward. Thank you.
Oh. I think Supervisor Giomi said it better than I could for my comments, so. Any public comments on this one? I don't see any. Must be doing a good job, you guys. So, well done. You can sit there for a vote here. Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to accept the Open Space Advisory Committee 2018 Annual Report and the Fiscal Year 1920 Work Plan as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Carried.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your, your compliments, and we certainly attribute what you are complimenting to Ann and her leadership. So thank you very much.
And Ann, this is one quick, if I talk about open space, do we have 11 square miles of open space in Carson City? Is that about it?
We have 7,000 acres, so I don't know the math on that for square miles.
The answer, the answer is, the answer is yes.
Pardon me?
The answer is yes. It's about 11 square miles.
Really? Thanks, guys. It really is phenomenal. Okay, thank you. All right.
It's not square, though.
All right. All right.
Now we're taking a break.
Yeah, you want to take a break now? Let's take a break. Let's take a break. Go ahead. Go.[512.03]
Order, we're on item number 18 Alpha. Carol, who else, who we got else doing it here? Okay, this is a discussion of possible action regarding contract 1819-205, emergency medical billing services for Carson City with Whitman Enterprises LLC at a rate of 3.85% on net collections and the fee of $9 per process membership for Carson City Care Ambulance Subscription Service. Carol, I know I just read that and probably what you're gonna, I'd love to ask you, is budgeted?
This is budgeted, yes. It's based on, obviously, the revenues collected.
Okay, all right, fire folks. Tell us why this is a good contract. Looks like it is, but tell us, take a little time and say, tell us about it.
Sandy Warko, Carson City Fire Department EMS Manager. So, this is an established billing company that we've been working with. We have not had any issues or problems with this billing company. In fact, they have been very responsive to when we are asking for additional help, either in education of staff or resubmitting claims that we think, a denial that came through didn't really match what our documentation showed, so we really pushed them to resubmit those claims. They typically will do that on their own. In addition, they actually lowered with their RFP, they lowered their rate this year. So, they were at 4.75% and they lowered it to 3.85% on the collections. So, we've been very happy and they're just over the hill. They'll, they come over at their own expense to meet with us and to educate our staff.
Okay, Laurie. Well, your lights are on.
Oh. Thank you. Just a question for the general public. The fee is also $9 for the process memberships. So, is that where the public can pay, is it $50 a year? There's a membership fee or something if they want their ambulance service? And why do we have to pay a fee for those?
Sandy Warko, for the record again. That, they are the ones that actually manage our membership and they're, they actually will take in the memberships. We do collect some at the firehouse where people want to come in and actually write us a check. They don't charge us $9 to manage that when we've collected the money and we're doing the finance processing. So, that's their fee for processing the finances of that.
But what's the membership fee?
Oh, the membership fee is for ambulance services. So, if, it's almost like an insurance policy.
How much? Sorry, is it $50 a year?
$50 individual, 75 for a family.
Okay.
I better say that a little louder, $50 a year for individuals, 75 for family?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
But we still bill their insurance, their insurance. It just means they don't, aren't responsible for any deductibles or, and if they have no insurance, it covers the cost, right? That's how the membership works? I'm trying to help you get some more members to explain it on the record. No out-of-pocket.
No out-of-pocket expenses.
Thank you.
Brad.
I think that this, for me, is a really good example of why even when we have a vendor that we like and appears to be doing a good job, there's a benefit to us to putting these services out to an RFP and making sure that even those good vendors are remaining competitive. So, in this particular case, we have a vendor, we've done business with them, we're happy with them, they're doing a great job, we put it out to bid and we get a 25% reduction in the fees. That's just money in our pocket because we're getting the same quality of service by the same company. So, congratulations for, for doing that. And that's a policy that, you know, I think we need to have throughout the city.
Okay, anything further? Board, public comment? Everybody's all signed up for the ambulance service? Okay, all right, motions in order.
I move to approve the proposed contract.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Okay, all right. Let's take up the next 18 Bravo. This is a possible discussion, action and discussion regarding a determination that Stonehouse Drilling and Construction LLC is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338 and whether to award contract number 1819-236, Carson City Well Number Three, redrill to Stonehouse Drilling and Construction for amount not to exceed $524,381. Okay? Who's gonna do this?
I will, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, Supervisors, Dan Stuckey, City Engineer, for the record. This project is the redrilling of well number three, which is off of Winnie Lane. It's, it's been on our master plan capital project list for some time now, so it's a high priority project for us, we're excited to get it done. This, the well that's there right now was last drilled in 1990, so it's, you know, it's 30 years old. It's, production has slowly decreased over the last, you know, years or a few years or so, and it's a really high producer historically for us. And we're confident that we'll get back to that with this redrill within 5% of our engineer's estimate. And just so you know, this is the, the redrilling of the well. There'll be another part of the project later on where they'll build some sort of structure, a building for the wellhead, a pump, some piping and we'll go along with a, with a future project to fully complete this project. But that's the basic summary of what we're doing out there.
Okay. Brad, Suva Zbunkowski.
Dan, I think you just indirectly answered my question. I was going to ask if the well was going to be drilled in the same location, within the same wellhouse, and it appears that that's not going to be the case, it'll be adjacent to where the current well is.
Yes, so it's about 50 feet away from the current well location is where it'll be.
Okay, and the wellhouse, its block, so it can't be moved? We need to build a new one?
I believe we're gonna build a little, a smaller structure for this new well location, but we'll still be utilizing, my understanding is still utilizing the, the old site as far as some of the piping in there and some of the other parts of that, that building, so.
All right, thank you.
Jason.
So, there'll be two buildings then, is what you're saying, we're gonna add a second building?
Yes, much smaller.
Just from an educational perspective, for me, you say it's been the best producing well and you've seen a reduction in production. Can you just, maybe you don't know this off the top of your head, but what, what kind of production do we get and what kind of decrease have we seen?
I might have to pull.
One of the water guys from the back.
I don't think it's been like a substantial, I don't, I don't have off the top of my head.
I'm not looking for, you know, down to the decimal point, number, I'm just, you know.
Eddie Qualer, for the Record Water Utility Manager, good morning, everybody. I don't have the exact numbers either, but I want to say it's about half of what it originally produced. Correct.
Yeah, and your anticipation is that this will get us back to the level that it was producing at?
Yes, if, if not more than that.
And I know that we have a contract with, coming up on the next agenda item, but how deep do you anticipate having to go for the well? Do you, do you have an estimate? I mean, I know that's what they're gonna do, but.
Yeah, I don't think they'll know for sure until they get, get in there, so I don't have an exact number for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'll talk a little bit on the next contract about.
The depth of the existing well is, do you know?
Eddie Qualer, I don't have the exact depth, but somewhere in the 300 level, 400 feet deep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? This panel, public comment on this issue? Ready for motion?
Yeah, I got it. I move to award contract 1819-236 as proposed.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. Let's now take up items 18 Charlie. Carol, you want to read it? Go ahead, huh?
It says 1124. I'm sure I can take it. Carol Akers, Purchasing and Contracts, this one's for the Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Contract Number 1920-033 For Hydrogeological Consulting Services. This is in conjunction with the awarded contract with Aqua Hydrogeologic Consulting, consulting for an amount not to exceed $59,708. And this is budgeted as well with the project.
Board comment?
Just a quick one. Dan, on the last one, you talked about the engineer's estimate. And so, when, when you do an engineer's estimate on this, are you including things like this hydrologic consulting as part of that engineer's estimate?
So, yeah.
Overall project?
Yeah, so the overall project budget, it's in the staff report for the whole well, three redrill, including this consultant, including, including the previous item and including the future items that I mentioned, is about $1 million, I believe. So, all of it is included, yes.
I just wanted, is that, someone asked me that, so I want to make sure we understood. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Public comment? Don't see any, motions in order.
I move to approve contract number 1920-033 as proposed.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you. Let's now take up 18 Delta. Carol?
Again, Carol Akers, Purchasing and Contracts, this is for discussion and possible action regarding a determination that Aspen Developers Corporation is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338 and whether to award contract number 1819-244 East-West Transmission Main Project Phase 2B for a total not to exceed amount of $5,487,419.40.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dan Stuckey, City Engineer, for the record. So, as the board knows, this, this is the final, fourth and final phase of the transmission project in the works for probably 10 to 15 years now. It's a big project for us and it'll be really nice to get done. Basically, it's a regional system, it's bringing water from Douglas County. And the key part of this, not only about diversifying our water portfolio, but we also are getting it up into our upper water zone, into Quill, which is the heart of the system, as you know. And we'll be able to distribute this water anywhere in the city. So, it's, it's a big project for us to do. I do want to point out, obviously, the main point of this project is it is, it's a water project, but there's significant street improvements as well. Anybody that's been out to Washington Street, there's alligator cracking, it's not in good shape. So, as part of this project, will be full-depth replacement of the asphalt for that, that street. Also, sidewalks end about halfway down Washington Street there, we'll be extending them all the way to Ormsby Boulevard. There'll also be some landscaping features, low-maintenance landscaping towards the westernmost side of Washington Street with this project. So, there's a lot of pedestrian improvements, connectivity, road improvements that are happening with this project. So, I want to, I did want to point that out. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just one clarification question on the vicinity map. Where does the project start for?
Yeah, no, good question, Mayor, and I should have, I should have gone through that. So, if you'll remember, the last phase ended at Phillips and Washington Street. So, everything west of Phillips, there's been new roadway there and obviously the pipes there. So, it'll be extending from Phillips Street. It'll run along Washington Street till it hits Ormsby Boulevard. Then it will go through the Anderson Ranch area, the city has about a 20-foot wide easement there to go through that area. Then it'll run in open space area on the northern side of the Long Ranch Estates. And then it'll basically essentially keep going in open space area up until Quill.
Okay, thank you, all right. Suva Zbunkowski.
Thank you, I already talked to Public Works Director on this, but I want you to tell the public how long this is gonna take. As I understand it, it'll be down in Washington by the fall and then done by the end of the year. Is that right?
Yeah, so we anticipate the work will start probably in July timeframe. They'll probably be in Washington Street, that's where they'll start. They'll be in Washington Street for probably two or three months. And then they'll extend and finish in the open space area. And that's strategic because, you know, you gotta pay before the weather gets too cold. Probably be finishing around the end of the year with the project, maybe a little bit into next year, but probably a six-month or so project.
Thank you.
Good question, all right. Anybody else? Public comment on this issue? All right, board, what do you want to do?
I move to award the contract as proposed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion.
On discussion. When the project is done with all the component parts, may we please have an accounting spreadsheet so we can see how we did against the original estimates and then the final project?
Yeah, absolutely, we'll do that.
One comment, too, sorry, should have brought it before. Are we doing notifications to Washington Street residents?
Yes, we, we've already been in touch with some of them, just kind of on a couple other items, just kind of in preparation, but yeah, there'll be a lot more of that once we get the contractor on board.
Because I'm getting notifications or calls because the USA Diggs has been out, which, you know, we, so I appreciate your helping.
Yep.
Yeah, one goes by Congressman Amade's house, too, so he's a couple, he's a house and a half off of Washington.
Yeah.
He hasn't complained either, don't worry, I'm just kidding you, okay. All right, we ready for a vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. Let's take up. Where am I here, I'll make sure. We postponed 18 Echo and 18 Foxtrot, let's go to 18 Gulf. All right, Carol.
Good morning, Carol Akers, Purchasing and Contracts, this is the last one for today, by me. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Contract Number 1920-001. This is for the third-party administrative services for the self-insured workers' compensation, general liability, auto liability, law enforcement liability, arrows and emissions, unemployment practices liability, insurance claims with Cannon Cochran Management Services, Inc. For an estimated amount of $222,123 through June 30th of 2022.
Okay, Cecilia, how'd you do this?
Cecilia Meyer, Risk Management Coordinator. We have been very happy with CCMSI as our third-party administrator for our self-insured workers' compensation program. And this year, because of some changes to our liability coverage, which Brandon Lewis is here with USI Insurance, if there's questions about that. They, the new carrier does not provide third-party administrative services themselves as our former carrier travelers did. So, CCMSI does also provide third-party administrative services for liability insurance. So, we would like to bring them on for that aspect as well.
Okay, all right. Board of comment, questions?
Just a comment. So, if we've got the math right, or I do, I might not. So, overall, by doing the new carrier and utilizing this methodology, we're about 30,000 less than what we thought budgetarily, right, overall? I know some of these are really hard because we never get a spreadsheet that brings it all back, but I, I think, again, we're doing a good thing here that we separated the contract and even though we have to add services to this one overall, we, it's, it's still a better deal for the taxpayers.
I believe so, but I would defer to Pam Ganger for that.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Pam. You hear the question? Go.
That's okay. We did analyze all of the different options that we had for all of our policies and this was definitely the best deal, yes.
Further board comments or questions? Public comment, anybody want to weigh in? Thank, thank you. Pam and Cecilia, Carol for doing a good job on this one, it's good, thank you. All right, we ready for a motion?
I move to approve contract number 1920-001.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. Okay, let's take up item 19 Alpha. This is a discussion of possible action regarding insurance agreements with public entity property insurance. Property insurance, including automobile physical damage, boiler, machine re-pollution, cyber insurance, at a total premium not to exceed $635,089 for fiscal year 2020. Pam, oh, you got, okay. Ms. Granger, go.
Good morning, Pam Leganger, Deputy CFO. And this is, this is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Our Fiscal Year 20 Property Insurance Agreement Renewal With The Public Entity Property Insurance Program. And the staff report references a total premium not to exceed $635,089. However, our insurance broker here, Brandon Lewis with USI Insurance Services, has been working really hard on behalf of Carson City and gave us some good news a few days ago, which was submitted as late material. And he was able to negotiate on Carson City's behalf a lower premium cost, down to $604,532, which is a reduction from the original estimate of over $30,000. So, that's awesome for us. This brings our premium rate increase from, from 17.15% down to 11.43%. And our insurance values also increased this year, 4.65% over last year's values. And finally, our amazing insurance brokerage fee was waived on this, thanks to Brandon here. So, that saves the city another $13,000. Here today is obviously Brandon to help and Cecil is, is here from vacation to help us answer questions as well.
How you doing today, Brandon?
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Want to say anything, fill in any? First, let us say thank you for helping us get a lower rate and for what you're doing for the city here. It's good stuff, Brandon, so, want to add anything?
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor, for the record, Brandon Lewis with USI Insurance. It's a privilege to serve the city. This year has been very challenging for property rate insurance increases. We're seeing those rate increases range from 14 to 25%. For other Northern Nevada entities, the initial came in at 18 for Carson and we honestly just said no, that that won't work. And as Pam mentioned, got that down to about 11 and a half percent, which although a significant increase, is one of the best we're seeing in Northern Nevada right now. So, thank you and thank you for the kind comments and happy to answer any other questions.
I have one that I've always wanted to ask. Do the, are the premiums on these insureds, on this insurance type of policy, do they take into account the, the limit on liability exposure for municipal governments?
Do the rates take into account the, the limits of liability for the property exposures, you mean?
If there's a lawsuit against us, the cap just went up from, used to be 100,000, now it's.
You mean tort liability?
Tort liability, yeah.
Oh, no, Mr. Mayor, the tort cap doesn't have an impact on the property insurance rate. That increase in the tort cap, I saw it was gonna go up to 150 and then 200,000, I believe, over the next two years. That may have an impact on the liability program, which is with a different carrier over time, but not an impact on the property insurance.
That's what I figured, okay, all right. Brad.
On the property insurance, Brandon, is that, is the coverage replacement value on improved properties?
Yes, sir, it is, it's on a replacement value for buildings and contents as well as covered vehicles, which is an advantage over a standard form.
And those values are recalculated each year and that's why we saw the 4.65% increase?
That's correct, each year we see 3% to 4% increase, just trended up. The carrier will do that just to ensure that we keep up with values. And we also receive updated values from the city for equipment and vehicles every year. And yes, that those account for that 4% increase.
So, the increase in value is not based on any increase in assessed value? It's, it's based on an estimated value from the insurance carrier?
Correct, it's not based on assessed value. It's based on, just take one step back, it's based on estimated replacement costs that the city has provided over time. But each year, the carrier does trend them up 3% to 4%, just to keep up with building cost inflation.
So, the reason I ask is because our assessor's department, they do an annual valuation on every property. And so, we're already doing the work to calculate an increase in value. And my concern is that if there's just a, an inclination, inclination to automatically increase it to keep up with inflation, first of all, there's no tie to the actual inflation index. And secondly, we've seen in the past decreases in assessed value and property value. So, is that accounted for as well? In other words, if the property values are decreasing, are we still gonna see increases in the premium value?
There have been years where the trend factor applied by the carrier for the estimated replacement cost has been less. It's been in the 1% to 2% range, this year it was the 3% to 4% range. To try to answer your question, Supervisor, the insurers rely on estimated construction replacement costs, which may not tie in exactly to the assessed values, which, as you mentioned, can go up and down depending on the year and the, the market, if you will. But the estimated replacement cost depends more on estimated construction costs in that market.
Yeah, which I think is the same system that the assessor uses. It's replacement cost new minus depreciation, you just take out the depreciation to get the value. You know, and it's just a concern of mine, I mean, in between 2008 and 2012, we saw approximately a 60% decrease in property value here. And I just would like to understand how that works for the property insurance. Do we see a decrease in rates in that instance or are they gonna remain stable and possibly even go up?
If estimated replacement costs, construction costs go down over, in a recession or in a period, in a period of years, we would certainly monitor that. We have our risk control group help with some modeling and valuations every year or two on Carson City. And so, if those were going down, we would certainly talk to the underwriters. We wouldn't accept an automatic increase in those cases if we didn't see general construction trends increasing to make sure that, yeah, to make sure that they were either adjusted or not increased if there was no merit to it. The insurance program that you're in also provides appraisals of all city properties valued over $5 million every five years, which occurred, I believe, two years ago. So, that's also a check to make sure that the values aren't just bumped up automatically, but they're set according to a formal appraisal.
Thank you for the work that you've done for the city and thank you for waiving your commission.
You're welcome, yes, the, yeah, the fee, that fee was designed to go away within the next two to three years. And with the increasing premiums, I think we just felt it was the right thing to do to remove that fee. Thank you, you're welcome.
So, just as a question, part of the also increased insured value is due to assets that we add. So, like the east-west transmission line, the improvements at the wharf. So, there's other things besides just the normal movement of assets, right? So, we can add assets that would then also increase our insurance costs. Because if I'm not mistaken, we did a bunch of work at the wharf and then we're like in four, three phases of the east-west transmission. So, as we add.
Yeah, as we add, yes, then we notify our insurance carriers and those items get added.
That's our premium also, okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments from the board? Public comment, anybody? I don't see any motions in order.
I move to direct, yes, authorize staff to enter into the insurance agreements as described.
Second.
There's a motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you very much, thanks again, we, I echo the comments about, thanks for waiving your fee and helping us out. And I, for Pam and Cecilia, I know that you guys work, you work long hours to get these things done, so, same to you, okay? All right.
Thank you.
Business, thank you.
All right. We're now gonna go to 19B and we're gonna open the. We're now going to go to 19B, and we're going to open a public hearing on proposed resolution for temporary interfund loans for a period not to exceed six months from the Regional Transportation Fund to the Carson Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, otherwise known as CAMPO. The CAMPO fund for an amount not to exceed $50,000 to the Street Maintenance Fund for an amount not, and for an amount not to exceed $200,000 from the General Fund to the Transit Fund in an amount not to exceed $600,000. For the, I read that wrong, for the Transit Fund. Okay, go ahead, Pam.
Again, good morning, Pamela Ganger, Deputy CFO. The Finance Department typically comes to you every time this time of year. And this is basically a worst-case scenario, just to make sure we have our, you know, that we're covered and we don't wind up with any negative cash balances in any of our funds at the end of the year. These funds in particular see a lot of activity over the summer months, and so they have a higher risk of going negative. And going negative because, especially with CAMPO and transit, we see a lot of grant revenues coming into those funds. But the way they're set up, they're reimbursement-type grants. So first, we spend the money and then we get reimbursement. So there's a higher risk there that we could experience a negative balance. So this is just to cover our bases and make sure that we don't wind up in that scenario. We did the transit request for that loan is a little bit higher than, well, a lot higher than it ordinarily would be this time of year. The issue with that is we purchased a couple of buses, and so we had a big outlay for that. We did recently just get in a large federal grant payment over $400,000, and that put us back in the green again for that fund. So it's not currently negative now at this time. However, it's possible it could still, you know, we're still spending a lot of money and doing those reimbursement-type grants. So it's just a, just a safety net, really.
Board of comments, questions? Public comment? Anybody? I don't see any. Motion's in order.
Resolution?
2019 R17.
Should have remembered that. I move to adopt resolution number 2019-R17.
Second.
Okay, we're going to, before we do that, we're going to close the hearing on, before we take the vote, we're going to close the hearing on this item. You know, once again, say, you know, we'll offer, again, any public comment? It's a public hearing time. Anybody? I don't see any. So we're going to close the hearing on this item and take up the motion that we just made. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed nay, carried. Thank you very much. Thanks, Pam. All right. All right, we're going to have a brunch break.
Brunch of bobs?
Way to get it, way to get it done early, Bob.
I don't know, man. Because of moving, moving right along. Okay, we're going to be in recess until 1:30 PM, and we'll take up item number 21 at that time.
We still have item 20?
20, 20, sorry. 20, board supervisors, got it. See, I don't see that all the time. Go, anybody? Board of supervisors, comments?
Yeah, just one comment. If you haven't been out to La Hotten lately, as of last night, there was eight inches of room left before it goes over the top of the spillways. So about 300,000 acre feet in storage. And the total capacity is about 308,000 acre feet.
Farmers ought to be happy.
The other thing I'll add, that they estimate peak flow has hit on the Carson River as of about 12 days ago, June 8. So we're on the downhill slide, but it's still a lot of water moving. Lot of water moving.
Anybody else? I just mentioned that yesterday, I went to the Grow with Google event at the Carson City Library. Google had about, oh, easily 20, 20 employees and volunteers there from their own, from their own shop and some of their vendors. But I just want to say, I was terribly impressed with our library here. And we were one of two libraries in the state to have Google come, take a look at us, and offer its services in helping people navigate the digital world we're moving into fairly rapidly. And I know that the Google people were very impressed with our library services and what we've done in our library, even as some would say is as small as it is. It was, it was, it's a good thing for Carson City to be recognized like that, and it's a good thing for the library to be recognized like that, so.
You should ask your Google question.
I will. Can I do that? I don't get in trouble? This goes to you, to the lawyers, Adriana, Dan, and Todd. What is a Google? I told you, you know.
Google the answer.
What is a Google, Dan? Todd, you're going to, you're, you've got an engineering degree.
I do have an engineering degree, but I don't know if I have a Google.
I don't know either, but I'll tell you, it's one followed by 100 zeros. That's what a Google represents in math. I don't know what that, how you, you call that a Google.
It's a math term.
It's a math term.
Like a billion or a trillion or a Google.
But you know what's kind of fun? I asked some of the Google folks there, the employees, what is a Google? I don't know. Anyway, it's just kind of cute. All right. Anything else? Board, go.
One more comment, and Lori can help me out on this. We jointly put out an article in the Appeal. Thank you, Appeal, for letting us do that, on road repairs and the financial structure that Carson City has, well, as every state and city and county has across the country, and the gap in funding between what we have each year for maintenance and capital projects and what our, our actual needs are. And I expected to get a lot of feedback that was maybe not complimentary. But I've got to say that every single response that I've received, which has been quite a few, has been very positive, along the lines of, what do you mean, we don't have enough money? We're willing to pay more to have better streets. What do we need to do? So, and I think that was the whole point of the article, was to try to help and get that information in front of the public so that they have a better understanding. Because we've had, you know, comments in the past that, that we are not doing our job. And it isn't, it isn't a matter of us not doing our job. It's that, at the end of the day, we have 10% to 15% of the funds that we need on an annual basis to do that job. Lori, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
I would just say that the comments I've been receiving is how much they appreciate that we wrote the article in an educational style that they could understand. They really did like the 70 cents of every dollar, because that really made them figure it out in their own budgets and in their own households, you know, if, how much does it cost me to do something? And I think it really hit home that they realized we don't have 70 cents of every dollar to put to roads. That's what I got this morning in a comment was, wow, it is so much money. And I'm like, and we don't have it. And so we may ask you to help us to make a decision. So it was a good response that I've received from it.
I got a positive response yesterday about it, yeah. All right. Any other comments? We ready to recess until 1:30? All right, then without objection, we'll be recessed until 1:30.